I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Tonight, we're going to start with Lucy with our high school students' report. Lucy, can I turn it over to you?
Yes, can everyone, everyone can hear me? Okay, cool. Hello, Board of Education members and members of our community. For anyone who doesn't know me, my name is Lucy Mortensen and I'm the senior representative. I hope you all had a nice summer break with your friends and family, and I want to give a special thanks to all the first responders in our community in light of Patriots' Day yesterday. Our first week of school here at EHS went really well, and we want to give a special welcome back to our seniors for this year, the class of 2024. This week at the high school, we had eight, we have eight outstanding colleges visiting our campus. For a complete list of colleges and dates, please see the district homepage. Homecoming is next weekend, September 22nd and 23rd. The pep rally and barbecue will take place Friday evening, where you can watch students participate in fun competitions and sports teams perform dances. The homecoming football game will be that evening from 7:00 to 8:00, and the next evening will be the boys' and girls' soccer games. Everyone is invited to come to the games, so pack the stands. Players Club announced their fall comedy, Broadway's popular "The Play That Goes Wrong." Auditions were on the first day of school, and the cast is now hard at work rehearsing for this hilarious show. Show dates and times will be announced at the next meeting. Vote Eastchester Varsity Football for Low Hood High School Football Team of the Week. The team had an amazing win last weekend against John Jay Cross River, 27 to 0. And also, a shout out to the Varsity Volleyball for winning against Sleepy Hollow yesterday, and Girls Cross Country for placing third in their meet this weekend. Congratulations. Michelle Tiso has been nominated for the Heart of a Giant Award. As our flag football quarterback, she has been one of 10 teenagers chosen among the many hundreds of football players in the tri-state area to potentially receive this honor and recognition. Vote for her on the USA Football website. And lastly, please remember that EHS Open House is next Thursday at 7:00 p.m. It will be an enjoyable evening, meeting all of our fantastic teachers. Good night and thanks for supporting all of us Eagles.
Thank you, Lucy. Appreciate it. Well, I want to welcome everyone to the September 12th Eastchester School Board of Education meeting tonight. I wanted to take a moment just to briefly speak on behalf of the board. Whether you're watching at home or here in person, thank you for being an active participant. We're here together because we all have the same common goal: to do what is best for our children, for our schools, and for this wonderful community that we call home. As you know, the community elected each trustee to represent your voices. We're here to advocate for all children, to support you in doing the same. As we begin the school year, we wanted to express our appreciation for you trusting us in this crucial role. We all take it very seriously. We would also like to take a moment and emphasize the importance of communication and sharing facts in the most helpful and efficient way possible. We are all well aware of the dangers of social media. We hear about it on a daily basis. Falsheids and misinformation perpetuated on social media platforms are detrimental to our community and the growth of our district. If you ever have a question or a concern, please reach out to us directly. Email the Board of Ed, reach out to us individually if that's what you're most comfortable doing. This will ensure an effective and accurate way to communicate and share information. Our board trustees have children enrolled in schools across every single building in this district. We all have children here. While we may have different personal views and needs, we are all aligned in providing the best education and environment for our students. We look forward to a positive, productive, and rewarding school year ahead. Our partnership will continue to strengthen our community, and as always, we want to sincerely thank you all for your support. With that, I'd like to ask, are there any board reports from any of the trustees? Shaun, please.
There we go. So I just want to take a moment to welcome everybody back to this school year. Ann Hutch will be hosting a rescheduled Welcome Back picnic this Friday from 4:30 to 8:00. So we want to welcome all community members and everyone down to come by, say hi, and have a good time. So looking forward to a great event and a very positive school year.
Thank you, Shaun. Yes, Jackie.
Okay, just want to give a few Greenville updates. Tomorrow, Greenville has their Open House at 7:00 p.m. On Thursday is the rescheduled Welcome Back Circus from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And next Wednesday, September 20th, is the first PTA meeting of the year. We hope to see you all there.
Thank you, Jackie. Lori?
Waverly's Open House is rescheduled for next Tuesday, September 19th at 7:00 p.m. And their back-to-school picnic is September 21st from 4:00 to 6:00, and we're looking forward to both events. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. I think with that, if there's no other, something else, sorry Christine, I couldn't see you over there.
Just as a reminder, Ann Hutch's also, and Open House is the 14th. The Eastchester Middle School's Open House is on the 23rd, and I believe this Thursday for, I think it's for the sixth graders, they have school picture days at the middle school.
Thank you, Christine. I think with that, Dr. Malenti, I'm going to turn the agenda over to you for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And as we always begin our superintendent's report, the focus is going to be on our students, obviously. I do want to thank Robert Jacoby and his tech team here tonight for the work that they have done to get us situated in the auditorium and take advantage of all of the full technology that the district has at play. So we'll see how tonight goes from a streaming point of view, from a communications point of view. And if this does fit the bill, then we'll continue in this particular forum despite the tightness up frontier. But other than that, let's see how the media and the communications, which is the essence of what we do. So on student recognition, we have a couple of students who we want to recognize tonight. Let's start with Kaya Nolan, an 11th grader at the high school. And to that end, I'm going to ask the business teacher to please come forward and do the appropriate recommendations. Okay, Mrs. Stipo?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Stipo, and I'm a business teacher here at the high school and the faculty advisor for FBLA. Future Business Leaders of America is a national organization dedicated to promoting business skills in students from middle school to college. Three years ago, we started a chapter here at Eastchester High School. I was here at the board meeting last May to introduce to you the students that placed in the top four at New York State Competition in Rochester. Each of those students was eligible to attend the national competition, and four of them traveled with me to Atlanta this summer to compete at the National Leadership Conference. The conference gave students an opportunity to network, attend leadership workshops, and increase their knowledge in a variety of business subjects. There were over 13,000 students from all over the nation that competed in over 70 events. One of our students competed in three events in advertising, journalism, and agribusiness at the State Leadership Conference in Rochester. Students are only allowed to compete in one event at the National Leadership Conference, so he chose to compete in advertising. He took an objective test, which included 100 multiple-choice questions on advertising. And I am excited to introduce junior Kaya Nolan, who placed second in advertising at the national level. We are all very proud of Kaya and his accomplishments. Kaya?
Oh, sure. Come up here, Kaya. Congratulations. And did everybody see what is presented to you? Michael, do you want to take a shot? Come here, Mrs. Stipo. Yeah, please. Does the president want to join us? Why don't you hold it? You won it. All right, and we'll do a... How's that, Spada?
Okay.
All right, good. Do you want to say a word or two to the community? Are you accustomed to public speaking?
Advertising, not particularly, but I can give it a shot.
It's a great skill. Go ahead. Show them.
Hello, everyone. I'm very honored to be here tonight and receive this award again. I'd just like to thank everyone, especially Ms. Stipo, for supporting me throughout my journey at the Future Business Leaders of America. I think in general, the program has provided me with a lot of useful skills, as I myself would actually be interested in a career in business, particularly advertising, which hence why I took this event. And I think, and part of the experience also is getting to meet new people with similar interests and forming new friendships. And I think that's just as valuable as actually gaining tangible skills in the field of business. Thank you.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
So you did a very good job. Yes. Congratulations, Kaya. And thank you again, Mrs. Stipo, for working with the students and accomplishing this for the district. And now we have Michelle. Where are you, Michelle? Come on up here. And while Michelle's coming up here, she is a high school senior nominated for the U.S. Football Heart of a Giant Award for her character, hard work, and dedication to the school community. Voting runs through September 24th. You see it there, www.usafootball.com/hoagvote. Is that it? H-O-A-G-V-O-T-E. Now, you've got to vote for her, all right? At least once, right? So come up here. Tell us why they should vote for you, Michelle.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I was nominated for this award by my coach, Mr. DeBalis, who's a teacher at the school and the head football coach for our girls' flag football team. Ironically enough, our athletic director, Mr. Gitlin, also nominated me separately, and they crashed into each other at one point. And I did not know I was nominated until like four days ago, which is very, I'm very honored to be nominated, and I thank everyone who's voted for me so far. The vote does end the 24th, and then there's a second and third round, so keep those thumbs ready because there's going to be a lot of voting. And I just want to thank everyone for thinking of me for this award. The Heart of a Giant, as it says, is character and hard work. What they told me to pick a characteristic that they thought I best embodied, I chose character because I think that's what Eastchester inspires, and I think a lot of the things that I do in the school community has helped build my character. And my coaches and my teachers, I want to thank them for helping me get this award because it goes to them as well, and my parents. So thank everyone who's voting, and please continue to vote.
All right, let's give her a good time. You know, it might be a cutoff moment, all right? All right, get this picture, and maybe you'll vote more. I don't know. Beautiful. And thank you for choosing character. How do you define character? Am I embarrassing you? Do you want to tell the group? Tell everybody. What is character to Michelle?
Well, I actually had to answer what character was on my sheet. And what I wrote for, for sports, I particularly wrote that things like talking trash or belittling an opponent or cheap shots, things that you say when nobody's looking or do when nobody's looking on the field, that's what makes someone's character. And I had a lot of experiences this year in all the sports I played, specifically in flag football, where you would see kids that were really talented or girls that came out of nowhere and you couldn't believe the talent that they brought to the field, but they were just not good people. And it took away from their performance on the field. And I said in my, my dedication to the, the character that I was, that I had never even thought once about talking bad about someone or putting them in a bad spot on the field, because it just takes away from who you are as a player. And I think that it can take away from how people remember you. They can remember you for how you played, and they can remember you how you reacted to how you played. And I think that that's really important for character on the field.
Wonderful. Very good. Thank you very much, Michelle and Kyla. So, quick opening day review. I've been a superintendent for a number of years, and I must say, I've been at a number of opening events in many different school districts. And I will say, this one was the most challenging, not because of anything in Eastchester particularly, but the weather, really, climate, call it what you will. The heat was oppressive, and I want to commend the faculty, the administration, and the students for the way they dealt with it. And it was tough. We had to keep students indoor. That's not easy. It's not the best way to open school, but I think we dealt with it as well as we could. And under the circumstances, kudos to everyone opening up under difficult circumstances. But let's talk a little bit about who Eastchester is as we open up this new school year, 2324. Here's a demographic breakdown. We are enrolling, as of today, 53% of our students are male, 47% are female. Our ethnicity, and we report this to the state, so we'd like you to know it early on, white, Caucasian, 65%, black, African-American, 2%, Hispanic-Latino, 15%, Asian, 16%, and multiracial, 2%. So that is the current composition of our student body. Enrollment-wise, and this number at the bottom, 3035, it's up to 3037 today. It may go back down one or two, back up again, but generally, it's probably going to hold in this range, the mid 3,000. We have 423 students at Waverly, 432 at Ann Hutch. Greenville, numbers 485. Our middle school is 731, and the high school is at 964. Now, how does that break out amongst our grade levels? Kindergarten is slightly above estimates at 225. Grade 1, which you recall when they came in a year ago in kindergarten, was one of the lowest kindergarten registrations in a while, is still hovering below 200 at 198. And then we perk up again, grade 2, 234 students distributed between Ann Hutch and Greenville, 235 at the grade 3, 230 at grade 4, and the 5th grade, slightly lower, at 218. Our middle school has a very strong, large 6th grade at 256. 7th grade is 216, 8th grade is 259. And then the high school rounds it out at 221 at the 9th grade, 245 at the 10th, 217 at the 11th, and 281 at the 12th, which, if I'm looking at the numbers correctly, is our largest class. So if you're looking at next year, which we have to do as we look at the budget, we're losing 281 students. So again, we're going to be struggling to stay at 3,000, assuming that you bring in about 215 to 220 in kindergarten. So when you look at cohorts, we are losing a very large class, and it really, you know, it does stand out as the 12th grade being as large a class as it is. So those are where our numbers are right now. As I said, 3037 is the total. Let me move on to one of the priorities of the board, which is strategic priority 5. As you know, the board has five priorities. The first, obviously, is strengthening school security. And I would like to add this evening that News 12 came by, interviewed a number of our students today, I believe our high school principal. And also, I had the opportunity to meet with News 12. Anybody else they meet with, Michael, that you're aware of? Oh, most important person, R S R O. That's what the story was about. So Officer Said is on camera, and I'm sure you can catch it on News 12 later this evening, and hopefully even into tomorrow morning if they carried a story. But it was a net positive, and it certainly is something that we're proud of. That's strategic priority 1. Priority 2 is strengthening academic outcomes. Priority 3 is the career counseling goal that we have. And priority 4 is now going to be dealing with our relationships with the entire capital bond project, and to what degree are there unmet needs. So we'll talk more about that at a future meeting. But we'd like to focus on priority 5 tonight. Taking a comprehensive approach to social, emotional learning and mental health. And the board was very committed to establishing partnerships so that we're able to benefit our students' grades K to 12. One of the first programs we're looking at that has a K to 12 framework is from Yale University, and it is called Ruler, R-U-L-E-R. We'll spell that out in a moment. It's an evidence-based research program for both students and staff. R is for recognition. We want our students and staff to recognize their own emotions and others. We want them to try and understand those emotions, begin to learn how to label them, and we'll show you an example, how to regulate and express them. So Ruler is really behaviorally driven, and it gives staff and students an opportunity to understand, respect, and regulate their emotions. It's a program that is widespread nationally. It builds a common language for our students and staff. It allows our students to test and, as we said earlier, regulate their emotions. And at the heart of Ruler, emotions do matter. How you feel is extremely important, and it's part of the human condition. And in the final analysis, this all supports academic learning. So here are some of the tools that our students will be learning once our staff has been adequately trained. Developing a school charter together in terms of emotions, what they are, what you feel, what your goal would be for your school in terms of regulating and understanding those emotions. A mood meter that helps you test in any moment, how do you feel? What's the intensity of that feeling? How are you going to address that feeling? How are you going to translate that into appropriate behavior? And then the meta moment and a blueprint. You can learn a lot about this program if you go online, and I've asked Michael to put on the website a seven-minute video. I think that's it, Robert, right, a seven-minute video? And it's up on our website now. And any parent listening to this, any community member who would like to access it, I think it's a great instructional tool. We've asked Dr. Greg Stow, who heads up Pupil Personnel Services for us, to lead us in this engagement. He himself has been trained in the program and is an ideal person heading up PPS to take the leadership role with the school community. So I did want the community to know that up to this point, we've had a K to 8 program, that it's a very good program, nobody is questioning that, but we do think it's important that we have a K to 12 program and that we incorporate all of our students, including our high school students. One last thing on the priority 4, or 5, I should say. I mentioned the word partnerships. So the first partnership is with Yale University. We'll talk more at future meetings, but we have a partnership with Southern Westchester Bosse's. And we are currently developing with them and nine other districts a grant for matching funds to help support not only learning loss, but also our students' mental and emotional health. So stay tuned on that one. That's the second partnership. And the third one that we'll be talking more about at future meetings is working collaboratively with the Eastchester Care Council, which is a group of experts in various areas of mental and emotional health. Speakers who are available to our students, and they are working with our board and board vice president to develop monthly themes. And you'll be hearing more about meetings that they'll be offering and will be announced through our communications in the future. So those are three partnerships to help support priority 5. A quick transportation update. We had committed a year ago to shortening the bus runs. Now, I will acknowledge that when you open school in any school district, the first couple, couple of weeks are, to use an apt metaphor, bumpy. Bumpy. That means buses are late, they're not on time, drivers are still learning the route. A driver gets sick and somebody else is brought in. So it takes a little bit of time, parents, to get this thing the way you really want it. So bear with us. But Waverly, we believe with some of the work that Chris Reichert has done in transportation, will now be averaging, along with the other schools, bus runs in the neighborhood of about 35, 40 minutes. They had been running an hour or longer, and we definitely felt that was much too long. So we can report that favorably, that we're making headway on that. So I want to thank the community and again, thank the board. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions on the presentation or any other questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Dr. Malenti. Any questions? I believe we are now up to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Christine, do I have a second? Shaun? Apologies, Christine. It's hard in this line of view to see what's going on.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda, which includes the following: 7 approval of minutes, 8 personal agenda, 9 committee on preschool special education, special education recommendations, 10 pupil personnel recommendations, and 11 business office recommendations.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. We are now up to future meeting dates, I believe? So our next meeting dates are September 26th and October 10th. And I believe, Dr. Malenti, if I'm not incorrect, it will be held here, correct, for the next meeting dates? Fantastic. And we are now up to comments from the public. Any public comments? Please, to the podium.
Yes, please, come to the podium.
Yes, please. Thank you.
And Lori, do you want them to sign in? Right here? Sure. Sign in and then...
We have the... Can you control the timer? Okay. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth O'Loughlin, and I have had three children who are successful graduates of the East Chester School District. I have also been a registered nurse for the last 46 years. And I have worked as a school nurse, as well as a New York State teacher. Throughout my nursing career, the most difficult and challenging job I have ever had was that of a school nurse. I have often heard the misconception expressed that the position appears, from an outside perspective, to be routine and rather easy. But it is quite the opposite. A school nurse is a one-man band in the office. What each day will bring is always unknown. The unexpected is a constant, and one's assessment skills need to be fast and accurate. The children with the food allergies, asthma attack, anxiety disorder, broken arm, newly diagnosed juvenile diabetic on a new pump, seizure disorder, new medications, medications ordered, medication administration, sports clearance, concussion monitoring is a daily occurrence, requiring patience, compassion, and diagnostic accuracy, keen discernment, and professional conduct. There are the annual demands, the New York State requirements of hearing, vision, scoliosis testing, and data entry for all the required immunizations. The job can require collecting data for the Department of Health during H1N1 and COVID. It means establishing care plans to provide each teacher for every student with a 504 plan. It requires vigilance when a life-saving remedy is required or when authorities must be contacted in the case of abuse. A school nurse may be required to go in the ambulance when a child's parent is at work and remain at their side until relieved. The job of a school nurse can be crisis intervention. I recall a day when I had four children in the office, each suffering with a different ailment, when an emergency call came from the high school that a student was having a grand mal seizure as a result from a migraine headache medication she had taken that morning. The 10 minutes for the ambulance to arrive seemed like 10 hours. It's hard to put a price tag on days like that. And days like that can be frequent. The job of a school nurse can be emotionally taxing. A school nurse must manage stress well and be able to remain calm and level-headed in a crisis, often responding and managing multiple situations. The school nurse must take the job soberly and treat each child with a level of care that they would provide for one of their own children. A school nurse is also an invaluable interdisciplinary team member with an insight equal to the psychologist, social worker, speech therapist, et cetera. There are two facts creating the problem that we have here in hiring and retaining the position of school nurse in East Chester: poor pay and poor use of talent, which manifests in low morale and poor employee retention. The pay for the position of school nurse does not adequately reflect a respect for the education and training the position requires, nor the job duties and responsibilities. In fact, East Chester pays their nurses poorly. I know of a recent college graduate with no real business world experience, problem-solving skills, or workplace expertise, who was hired at $70,000 a year. And yet, we are discussing a salary amount for a school nurse that is significantly lower than other professionals with far less responsibility. While a sign-on bonus sounds attractive, it does not encourage retention. The salary must reflect a respect for a nurse's education, expertise, job responsibilities, and personal demands. Frankly, I find the current salary to be shameful and indicative of misplaced values. What is more important to a community than proper care and stewardship of our children? Also, consider the value a good school nurse has to the parents of a child in his or her care. If I were to develop a long-range plan to hire and retain a school nurse, I would not only increase the salary, but I would reconstruct the way we define the position and its role. I would have a nurse in each school building, as well as a nursing supervisor to oversee the district nurses...
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. We have a three-minute limit. If you can just wrap up...
Two, two.
Yes, absolutely. Not a problem. Apologies to interrupt.
...to oversee the district nurses, to lend the ancillary support needed throughout the year, independent of the secretary in each office. This support would ensure longevity of personnel and thus retain nurses familiar with a child's health history. I would structure it to enable the school nurse to attend interdisciplinary meetings, have input on 504 and interdisciplinary meetings such as working on care plans for those with medical needs while providing in-service education to students and staff. In conclusion, please do not underestimate the importance or the position of a school nurse when determining the salary of a nurse or the structure of the health office. While there are many administrative duties and bureaucratic demands on a school nurse, remember that they are the people who will be holding the hand of the needy and ailing child. Theirs will be the face that they see when they are sad or suffering, frightened or in distress. To create a position that is both compensates and respects the role of the school nurse can only be a benefit to our community and in the best interest of our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public this evening? Please come up.
I'm going to try to make it quick. Good evening, board members and superintendents. I'm Nabeen Jha. I reside at 216 Downey Avenue in Tuckahoe. I saw the letter about nurse pay and was quite concerned. Nurse pay being 30% lower than our neighborhood districts is troubling. I saw the note about bonus. I'm guessing that is to circumvent any existing agreements. While that is an acceptable interim solution, it should be a bridge to an increase in the contractual salary base pay to incentivize the nurses to stay for the long term. My son has asthma and food allergies, so I'm particularly concerned. Kids with chronic health issues in particular benefit from having stability in the nursing staff, and it allows the nurses to get to know the individual kids and become familiar with their conditions. While we're on the topic of pay, it would be good to know how we compare to the neighborhood schools districts when it comes to the pay of teachers and rest of the school staff. I'm hoping we stay competitive. And lastly, in general, I was curious about the school funding. My understanding is somewhat limited. So I gather there are two sources, the school taxes and the state aid. You know, the school taxes, I'm sure, is always a very touchy subject. So I was curious if you guys have ever thought about a separate stream of funding where you ask, you know, parents who have kids in the school system to pay more in some other way? AKA like an endowment fund or something? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public this evening? Okay. Well, I believe we are ready to... Do I have a motion to adjourn? Chrissy? Second? Jackie? All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.